Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. Welcome to the council meeting. To close proceedings tonight, we've invited Professor Peter O'Callaghan from the Galway City Catholic parish to open the prayer.
Thank you. I once read that the best way to read the Bible was to have the Bible in one hand and the newspaper in the other. And I frequently think of that, particularly recently with the rescue of the young soccer players from that cave. And I think how many lessons we can take from that. First of all, international cooperation, people using their many and varied skills, the concern of so many people for those locked in that dark place. And I would take the lessons from that, thinking of the scriptures that remind us that we should be concerned about others, we should give our skills and abilities to help in every possible way. So I would pray that, Lord, when we find ourselves in a dark place, there would be others there to help us, that we too should reach out to those who are in any need, whether their dark place is sickness, bereavement, unemployment, or whatever, to know that we have skills to put light on their path, that we too have the opportunity for others to help us. So we ask that we'd be open to what happens in the day-to-day activities around us and use all our talents and values for the betterment of those around us. We make this prayer through Christ our Lord. Amen. Thank you.
Before proceeding, I'd like to acknowledge Tasmania and our individual community as the traditional custodians of the land of Luminees tonight and pay our respects to all of the pastors present. And also I remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded audio visually. We'll be available on the website later. The meeting is open and not in quality from Gordon's, uh, the great, uh, Gordon and Amway's on the lead. Uh, no, I've acknowledged, so confirmation of this is in the sort of council meeting in order to answer July 28th, September 28th, which has been spread to the town of Piers, taking it forward to the city for all that to pay. Barry, do you have anything else? This is our corporate finance man, treasurer, because he follows the whole of the area of council. Again, to our council, my, 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 and so it's, uh, missed the, uh, correct, now, in with the management, and in change to, uh, and typically, uh, come back in 2019. He began with a small, uh, thank you very much. Over and forward, council notes the workshop from the 6th and 23rd of I and the attending meeting on the 27th, which are the content of the 23rd, as in, um... I have one petition this evening, uh, from, signed by 12 Sydney trees in relation to a bargain goal at 1614 St. Mary's. Are there any other petitions available? On the 7th, I have questions, I may ask, 6th, I have questions, I just, uh, 22. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I've been prepared with me for some of these to, uh, thank you. Um, the questions, I believe, are printed in the council handbook. Uh, first question is from Denise Hogan and relates to the Clarence Inger and planning scheme. Hope you might, if I don't read the entire question out, I have kind of a wish to meet it. Uh, we'll give you, uh, just a snapshot, okay, in relation to that. Actually, it's a question in relation to, uh, planning directive number one and what mandates the council must adopt. Response, I would advise, and these responses will be printed in the, uh, in the agenda. Planing directive one can say government is a template that can be populated but not modified at the local level unless specifically provided for. The specific text that mandates council adoption of the definition and example of visitor accommodation is found in section 3.0, contents of planning scheme, and 6.0 additional provisions. 3.0 provides that a planning scheme must not contain the provision unless the provision is set out in the planning directive, and in accordance with the planning directive, the provision must be included in the planning scheme. Or B, the provision is a provision set out in this planning directive, and in accordance with this planning directive may be, but is not required to be included in the planning scheme. I'm sorry about the long-winded answer, but it's a complicated question. Or C, the provision is... Sorry?
Only if you want the question and the heading through the second directive.
Okay, sorry, okay, well then, I would refer you to plan, uh, section 3.0, contents of planning scheme, and question 6.0, additional provisions. And we, if you're comfortable with the extent of my answer today, we will put that in writing to you tomorrow. Okay. I'll move on to the next question, which is from Sachi Yasuda. Question, uh, question one was, with our acts notice, we receive a brochure with comments from individual aldermen on the back, uh, aldermen, huh? Oh, sorry, individual, oh, start again. With comments from individual aldermen on the back, are aldermen paying for this obvious political advertising at ratepayer expense? The answer to that question is, the brochure provides an opportunity for aldermen to communicate with ratepayers. The brochure does not contain political advertising and is governed by a council policy relating to the content of articles. The policy provides that aldermen's articles are not published in the newsletter immediately prior to the conduct of an election. Second question from Sachi Yasuda is, when will Council CCC join the 21st century and have a proper online form submission? It's ridiculous to have to print out a form, fill it in by hand, scan it, post it, and email it in. Council is currently redeveloping its website. Council is also working to develop an e-services portal. It is anticipated that the online lodgment of some form will be available via the web service, via the website and e-services portal early in 2019. And I would be happy also to discuss this matter first, with the person asking the question. Next question is from Mr. John Hodgman, and the question is, to confirm the validity of a development application for a tourist development on Rosney Hill, has the application fee been paid? The application is not a valid application until consent is obtained from the relevant government minister and council's general manager. Question from Mr. John, council, and the question is, if, if or when the development application for the proposed large tourism complex within the Rosney Hill Nature Recreation Area is advertised for public content, comment, will the boundary of the proposed sublease be shown on the plans released to public viewing? The response, the area is occupied by the proposal would be accurately designated. This would not necessarily identify the precise areas of the sublease. Any sublease would be the subject of separate process and would however likely reflect closely the area of the proposed development. Question from Mr. Peter Edwards. Question, Clarence has driven his own agenda for Rosney Hill Reserve for several years without adequate community consultation. The proposed tur- tourism development has illustrated a failure to communicate by council. Criticism is constantly mounting over this failure. Any continuation will not only cost council significant money, time, and resources funded by ratepayers, but build the resentment held by the community and electors towards this non-consultative council. Therefore, why won't council and the state government move to stop the development? In response, the state government through the relevant minister chooses to give permission for the making of the application, question, and permission of the general manager is then also given. Council must determine that application in accordance with Clarence Inger and planning stand 20%. Thank you, Senator. There's nothing yet, uh, I have 7.3, I have 7.4, question about others, and I must, uh, I... Congratulations, there's only one question askable per person.
Maybe a long question, though. And it has to relate to when 1,100 people requested council, and the word council, to a meeting, which related to Rosney Hill. And I've checked this with the relevant government departments. Council is all of the aldermen. Can you please explain why what Mr. Walker, Hume, Goham, Dowst and Campbell were not present, and why there was only a representative from council as the petition was for all of council to attend that meeting and to answer questions? Could you please answer the question why council didn't respond as the act states?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a number of the aldermen were unavailable on the night, as is quite commonly the case for specific dates. In terms of council, council conducting the meeting in accordance with the act, I believe that council is conducting the meeting in accordance with their requirements.
Have a good evening, Michael Gied, 53, Kenguru Road, Galway. On my question, on Tuesday, Jim Lockley and myself examined the various reports, including the construction management plan and the construction environmental report prepared by Bachelor Civil Contractors and Hunter Developments to obtain a building permit to start construction in Kangaroo Bay. One would have to question the quality of these reports when environmental was misspelt on the cover of the construction environmental report, and the construction management plan stated in at least all occasions the stormwater pipes associated with the site were to be laid in Clarence Street rather than Cambridge Road.
Could I ask you to express the question, please?
Should a building permit indeed have been issued when there are obvious errors contained in the reports?
My thanks, Mr. Mayor, I'm not aware of the errors contained in the report. I've got no doubt that what you've outlined is accurate, but in the context of the documentation, it was deemed, I believe, by our building surveyors and engineering experts to meet the requirements of the Act of the building regulations and planning permits, so that the building permit was issued. Are there any other questions from members of the public?
Yes, I'm addressing this personally to Mr. Andrew Paul.
If you could identify yourself.
Yes, Peter McDermott here, I live at number one, Hooky Place and Ropey. And I think Mr. Paul is quite familiar with my name on quite a lot, on several occasions. Uh, Mr. Paul, could you please explain to me, is in regard to a street light on the corner of Hooky Street and Hooky Place, which at the moment is still causing me a lot of anxiety and stress? Uh, the position is, how come it was put up last year? And 17 years ago it was taken down, and it was promised to me faithfully by Jock Campbell and the aldermen, Mr. James, et cetera, and everyone else, and it had never been put up again? So we had a chap across the road, I believe, Mr. Wagner, 66 Hooky Street, was the only complainer, and it had this light put back up again. Uh, this was my position here. This time it was put back up with deputy mayor, Mr. Campbell not present, and he was, uh, had no idea what was going on. Uh, I have contacted every...
Yeah, uh, this, this, we, uh, is the question why was it put up?
Uh, yeah, yes, well, this is my, this is my side of the story.
Well, we can answer the question if you'd like us to.
Yeah, but if I could continue and then let you, let me know at the end what I'm gonna say now.
Okay, there's no...
Yeah, well, this is my, I have contacted every person in relation to the light shining bright on my home. A shield was promised on outside of light, which Mr. James will confirm. Have to close bedroom doors and sleep in back room, and this, I find, is no lifestyle to me, currently.
Thank you for the question. Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, yes, I understand, thank you, big question. I am aware of the, of the history of the matter. Um, to answer the first part of the question, the light was reinstored. Um, yes, the matter was brought before council and council, as acting as council resolved with the light back, um, uh, for, for road safety reasons. In respect to the particular matters you're, you're raising, um, we have certainly taken up with Tasnet Works in relation to shielding of the light, and the light is of a kind that that's the shielding they provide, the best they can do in that respect. As a consequence of that, we have gone back to Tasnet Works and made special application to the, for the installation of a light on the alternative, on an alternative location, still to try and endeavour to provide the same road safety outcomes, but of a different style that perhaps can be less interesting, but I can't give you, as we said here, an undertaking that that will be centered through by trans, um, by Tasnet Works, but we are taking up the issue with it.
And as I've, as I've pointed to, it's, uh, at the moment it's not very good lifestyle to me, and I'm 73 years of age, and it doesn't help, I, uh, talk.
We understand that, and we are working to provide a way to solution to this. Thank you very much, Mr. McDermott. Are there any other questions for some members of the public? I'd make statements by members of the public, and we have, uh, I do need to remind you that under meeting regulations again, uh, that we can offer a three-minute opportunity to speak, and that there will be a three-second warning, so if you've got an opportunity to write that. Gentlemen. First speaker, Mr. Mayor, is Mr. Bill Butler of Wentworth Street, Galway, who wishes to address council in relation to a development application to Alliance Drive. Mr. Butler. Come forward, please.
Thank you. Bill Butler from Wentworth Street. Hello, presented a noise assessment for the, um, uh, housing of dogs at Two Alliance Drive. To do, I just wanted to summarise that letter I provided. Um, myself and a colleague took measurements of dog noise on two occasions. We both considered it, um, a loud dog, not the loudest, but a loud dog. Uh, we tried to support that by looking at further noise assessments conducted by acoustic consultants, consulted seven other reports, and they confirmed that, yes, that noise we were using was on the louder range of dog noises. No, not the loudest barking noise, but at the loud end. So we used that, um, measured level to then predict noise levels at the adjacent houses, two of them. Um, in the initial matter, that was at the living boundary of those titles. Council then further requested that that assessment be at the actual title boundary. So there's a subsequent letter that revised that. It was, the noise level was assessed against the planning scheme, 55 dB as an EQ, 65 dB as a max, and the assessment showed that at the title boundaries of those adjacent properties, it was just on or under the planning scheme criteria. So, yeah, therefore showed they are acceptable noise levels by that assessment.
Next speaker, Mr. Mayor, is Kimberly Elphur of Alliance Drive, Kenguru, who wishes to address council in relation to the same matter.
Good evening, ma'am and alderman, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I started nine years just helping out friends with their dogs, and then their friends came, and friends of friends. I discovered dog owners did not want to cage their dogs, preferring a home away from home environment. There was such a need that I started getting 10 to 15 dogs. Owners started reaching out, asking for doggy daycare, for problem dogs whilst they went to work, barking, howling, and escaping dogs. Hobart and Kingborough councils have recognised the need and have dog care centres for 40 to 60 dogs, Clarence does not. Increasingly, we have requests to daycare tourists' dogs whilst they visit our attractions where dogs are not permitted. Dogs are in a home environment compared to the old model of putting dogs in isolation by caging them. Where would you want your dog to sleep? In a cold cage or in a warm camping lounge? Dog owners want to have a choice. Trained dog attendance with dogs at all times eliminates problems associated with dogs in kennels, including barking. Dogs run free, play, explore in designated areas, happy, busy dogs do not bark. A day in the life with us is so different to a day of a dog in a cage. Dogs are supervised with live-in attendance 24/7, at night, dogs sleep in our home, common sense would tell you that we need to sleep too. The dogs are so tired from running around of the day, they sleep like babies, thank God. I am proud to say that in nine years, we have never had a noise complaint using this model. The success of my business has allowed me to give back, and I am very generous to the Clarence Dogs Home and many other charities. Home stays for palliative care patients, and once they have passed, we foster their dogs until we find them a home. Referrals from social and caseworkers when they climb for admitted to hospital in an emergency and have no one, we step in and care for their dogs. I am also very proud to be recognised for my work with the animals during the bushfires for receiving an award. The number of dogs gives me the ability to help the less fortunate in the community too. Our trial gave us the knowledge to know where best to set up their dog designated areas that was less disruptive to my neighbours, including adding a new car park. Peace of mind to dog owners whilst being considerate to our neighbours at all times. By eliminating signage and concealing the property, this will ensure our neighbours' peace and privacy. I have been open and transparent, letting my neighbours know that I was to trial the service and see how best set up. I'm hoping that my approval is granted and that you can appreciate the need for such a facility in our municipality. Let Clarence Council lead the future with the very first cage-free boarding facility in Tasmania. I would like to thank those who came out to support me tonight, it means a great deal to me, thank you. Thank you.
I must ask about, uh, we quite often have debates in this chamber, and there's very people who are very strongly one way or another, and it's very awkward for people to be able to, uh, express their views if there's audience participation on that side. So I'd please ask you not to interject in that way.
Next speaker, Mr. Mayor, is Stephen Magnus, also on Alliance Drive, Kenguru, who wishes to address council in relation to the same matter.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. My name's Stephen Magnus, Kimberly Elphur's husband. I would just like to address you more or less about the concerns people have more or less put in, and more or less these concerns have been put in the folder, which is more or less in front of you at the present time. Uh, noise and other, well, as far as we're concerned, we're happy to have another noise survey done, once these, uh, kennels are up and running, well, not so much kennels, but daycares up and running. So as far as we're concerned, we're not worried about any big, as far as noise is concerned. Increased traffic, well, our driveway is more or less the first driveway on the right as we come into Alliance Drive. Um, we've actually moved where we're gonna have the entrance for our clients to come in, mainly so we take away any worries of our neighbours, the concern about traffic going up past their driveways or anything like that, but as far as we can see, we're the only people that's gonna be, um, affected by it, so as far as the traffic's concerned, we can't see too much there. Land depreciation, we operate in the same business of five years and Lenders Farm, using the same concept, without even receiving complaints. During that time, a closed property sold for 1.1 million, and last year, our neighbour downsizing, more or less sold her property for 1.8. We have included in our folders letters from the real estate agent and the purchasers stating that our, uh, presence next door did not hinder the sale in any way, and we also include copies of land valuations. In aggregate landscaping, we've planned it something like about eight trees around the place at the moment, and if we need to plan any more, we're willing to go ahead and plan them, just to satisfy everyone concerned. Uh, enforcement of conditions, well, we're aware that our business must run in accordance with regulations and also in harmony with our neighbours. It's any common sense that we will adhere to conditions that we want our business to continue to succeed. A letter is included, initially sent to our neighbours, inviting them to view our setup and voice their concerns at the start-up. Sadly, only two attended, but both parties left expressing their enjoyment and more or less happy for us to be their neighbours. Um, other objections, well, planning's advice, uh, these need not to be addressed, but we've also answered briefly in our folders, which are in front of you. We look forward to providing a positive contribution to the Clarence, dog owners, and municipality. Thank you for hearing that.
Next speaker, Mr. Mayor, is Mr. Scott Bailey, uh, of Rosney Park, who wishes to address council in relation to development application concerning 17 Belais Street.
Hello, my name's Scott Bailey, uh, I'm from Surf Road in Seven Mile Beach, um, I work in Bayfield Street. Um, so I'm proposing to redevelop the building, um, at 17 Belais Street, um, on the north-east corner of, um, the mall. Um, stage one would perform work on the existing commercial floors, exterior upgrade, and construct rear car parks, and stage two, uh, to construct additional floors containing four residential apartments on top. Um, I've requested that the council consider a waiver of the cash-in lieu requirement for four, the four additional car parks, um, for an additional four car parks, because I believe that given the position, design, and residential nature of the development, that cash-in lieu would serve no purpose and would essentially be a $48,000 tax on the development. The cash-in lieu formula is an arbitrary formula. Um, if there are compelling arguments to change it on the, on a case-by-case basis, then I believe it should, they should be considered. Um, it should be noted that the building already has 26 car parks in lieu associated with it. Um, I'm, um, in addition, I'm proposing to place, so, so one thing I should make clear is, I'm actually building four car parks, one, and each of those four car parks will be attached to one of the apartments. I'm proposing to place a covenant on the title of each apartment to restrict the apartment owners to owning a maximum of one vehicle, or at least associating one vehicle with the premises. This would send a message to would-be buyers that if you have two cars, don't buy the apartment. Council also enforces parking restrictions, which will be, um, which will all be restricted on a time basis. So in my view, it's not plausible to believe that residential occupants could park a second vehicle in the nearby car parks on a sustainable basis. They'd be forever moving their cars around to addition, to, to avoid car parking fines. Um, this approach would demonstrate council's support of sustainable high-density living, uh, and in this instance, it's a way of managing demand rather than increasing the supply of car parks. Um, I've emailed a more detailed summary of my response to the report, um, uh, that was done, um, today. Um, the report provided in the agenda recommends that council refuse the application because of my request for a waiver. I think every other, at, um, the development itself has been widely accepted as being a good development, and the only reason that they've refused, uh, recommending refusal of the application is because of my request for a waiver. Um, the report is disappointing, uh, because it's clear that it's biased, subjective, and contradictory in its assessment of the car parking issue, um, in order to justify the cash-in lieu payments, um, and it is dismissive of the alternative. I believe it would be unsound for the council to rely on the report to refuse the waiver, and therefore the application. I've given a number of reasons and examples to support my view about the report in the email. email that I sent earlier today, I can provide more detailed response if required. Notwithstanding the report, I would appreciate if council would consider the proposal to waive the requirement for cash-in-loo on its merits. Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr Mayor, Denise Hoggan, of Rosney Point, who wishes to address council in relation to the management of the Rosney Hill Nature Recreation Area.
Mr Mayor, councillors, Mr General Manager, in this brief address, I want to focus on three areas, the why, the what and the how of your management of the Rosney Nature Recreation Area. Turning first to why you are the managers, is it just that Clarence City Council are astute, is an astute business entity? It can't be that, has to be a resounding no, because we're looking at a nature recreation area. Unlike some reports in the mainstream media, it is not prime real estate. You are the land managers because the community of Rosney Montague Bay started working on land management in this area over twenty years ago. They commissioned the first management plan in nineteen ninety-seven, a plan developed by Gerida Greath, which is the launching pad for this, your 2011 management strategy. I expect that what they have to say, your 2011 consultants, is of importance here. This land is highly valued by the local community, giving it a sense of place, and that's on page three of your own management strategy. Now, what I'm about to say is probably teaching my grandmother to suck eggs, but what are council's legal obligations as land managers? The National Parks and Reserve Management Act, Section Thirty, clearly states them, I'm sure you're aware of this. Since this is not a non-statutory plan, we need to go straight to Section One B. You are, and I quote, "to manage the land in a manner that is consistent with the purpose for which the land was reserved." And we can find that purpose in the Nature Conservation Act of two thousand and two. It's public regi-, excuse me, public recreation and education, consistent with the natural and cultural values of that land. Now, the natural values are self-evident to those that take the time to have a detailed look. As to the cultural values, giving the local community a strong sense of place is just a starting point. How are you going with these legal responsibilities and with the action plan developed in two thousand and seven? It's not for me as an individual to judge how you're going, it's up to you to assess. Two premiers have written about your responsibilities and have expressed similar views. The first was the late Jim Bacon in two thousand and three, in a letter to the Rosney Bay, Rosney Montague Bay Land Care. The second was Premier Will Hodgman to me, just last week. Now, the community has entrusted, now it's time for you to all reflect. Thank you.
No further speakers, Mr Mayor.
Thank you very much. Item number nine is in relation to the notice, after mine's called.
Mr Mayor, due to receiving various advice after the tabling of this motion, I wish to withdraw the motion.
Thank you very much. Item ten, reports from outside bodies, ten points one, I join authorities, I'd like to pay the report to the Southern Department of Council authorities to turn without a main theme. I've been refused first, I don't argue.
Would like to make a comment if I have a second, please. Mr Mayor, the Ralphs Bay Coastal Track, quotes have been received in relation to a permit to conceal Aboriginal mittens and that is following the provision of information requested by the Aboriginal Heritage Council. And secondly, the track alignment has been identified at Fort Direction. The Defence Force has approved a ten-year licence agreement with council for a track to link the foreshore to Fort Direction and Potters Hill Reserve.
Do we have a need of a discussion or a word to add? We're on this topic, the NRA committee.
Just a comment, Mr Mayor, thank you, is that the Cromwell Coastal Reserve Activity Plan is having a review and a walk-on talk, so it would be good, I think, an email me out with an invite to Alderman and I would appreciate those that live close by attending, thank you.
We have the members of the Business Assembly Board of Management meeting for the interview.
As your committee put in. I have Belreid Community Art, but I haven't got it with me and I did send it by email. Thank you. And I will send in the site myself once.
Other reports? Thank you. That report was a good one, I think. Item eleven-two, there's nothing there, so I now advise the council to intend the city's planning authority, because I'm having standing approvals access, holding on to the first item. That's a case for the lives, drive, change of use, animal breeding, report change. Thank you all in time, I thank you everybody.
I am, thank you.
Thank you, Lord James, on the card, you'd like to speak.
Just in the context that the attached report has endorsed the approval of this application, there seems to be an adequate amount of ability to monitor and manage any concerns to do with noise, traffic or odour. This particular application is for a very progressive approach to the care and attention that dogs need, as much as their human owners when time comes for them to be separated or away from home. I actually applaud the applicant for the ideology behind this, I think that this is something that will be a forerunner for dog care and management in the future and I support the officer's recommendation.
Yes, there's been a lot of positive endorsements for this, it's obviously that it means the harm to touch a higher level of security and it's a lot better for both and I seek orders more.
Other speakers? Yes, Mr Mayor, it's great to see an application come forward in this format and also too, I know a number of us have been down there and actually seen the operation. Personally, you know, for an animal to actually be indoors and share a section of the house on the lounge, you know, is quite a feat and it's quite unusual and I think it demonstrates the nature of where the people who are making this application are heading and it's really tremendous of them. The only question I have of it, the matter is in relation through you, Mr Mayor, to Mr Tui and his capacity as the officer responsible. Mr Tui, on page forty-five, it says, I quote, "A kennel licence under the provisions of the Dog Control Act two, two thousand will be required before the use can commence." My question through the mayor to Mr Tui, is that a sort of a procedural thing and it wouldn't necessarily incorporate or cause too much concern to the applicant? Or is it another case of having to fill out the form and tick off the red boxes in relation to any red tape that's required?
Through you, Mayor, is it a procedural matter? Thank you. Look, I support the application, but one thing I would like to do is praise the ambassador's wonderful presentation, so it's something of such high quality and for simple things like this, I really think you've done magnificent job and you are to be congratulated on, I think all the Aldermen agree with that.
I was going to say exactly that and for the fact that the council has actually recommended for approval, there's been a tremendous effort in actually endorsing it even further. I can genuinely say that the applicant is one of the most genuinely caring people and I get upset, I suppose, for dogs that I've ever come across, I just think she is so genuine, she actually really, this is something that the eastern shore does not have and we see it on the western shore, we've got doggy daycares all over the place, but this is a tremendous addition to the eastern shore. The location is perfect in relation to the airport, in relation to the convenience factor and I fully, fully endorse this application. I just think she should franchise the idea.
So the recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those available. Karen, you know. Item seven-three-point-two is a proposal application for two-year-old children for dwelling conditions. Back on the track, number one, I expect it's on. Look, Mayor, the representation was about the boundary setback and if you look at the susceptible solutions, I think it's well truly answered, so I totally support the recommendation.
Nothing to add, thank you, Mr.
Other speakers? The recommendation is for approval, subject to conditions and advice, all those about. Seven-three-point-three is a proposal application subject to advice. Mr Mayor, I'm finding the recommendation is suggested.
I think, Mr Mayor, look, of course, this is a really, well, it's like any application, it's important and it should, and it deserves consideration in relation to it. The question that arises here is in relation to as to whether council should waive a cash-in-loo for a deficiency in the number of car parking spaces. And I suppose when we are looking at development within this area, that there needs to be consideration given as to whether or not council has to make a decision as to waive a car parking cash-in-loo requirement, as it has been the case for many other developers in that area. And the basis of that is that in the long, well, in the shorter patch term and even in the medium to longer term, council has to address the parking within that Rosney area. And the nature of that having to be cash-in-loo, which would go, which would have to be expended in that particular area because of the, I suppose, the development of that area and also to the possibility of a multi-storey car park. That has been discussed in this place over the years and I have been, and I know a number of the Aldermen around in this area, in this chamber, have tried to come to grips with how we're going to cater for parking in that area and also to the longer, shorter and longer term. I listen very carefully to the developer and I know that he is trying to bring into the, into the city CBD, another development which is important, but if we consider as to whether or not we should waive this, and it's the very nature of doing that, may send a signal to other developers that their council is making a decision here that would in fact open the doors or make it more of a precedent to others to come and say, look, we would request council to waive the car parking requirement in accordance with our policy and therefore we would be in an awkward situation to say, well, look, in this situation, we made a decision because there were certain circumstances and in your particular case, those circumstances didn't necessarily apply. So it's a very awkward situation. We want the development to occur, but at the same time, we need to fulfil our policy and make necessary provision for car parking in that medium and longer term capacity.
I support what Alderman James has said. I support such developments, but I can't support the waiving of the payment of car parking, which is short, as Alderman James said, parking is present and we should council have to develop further car parking in this region, the cash-in-loo from any development that's short of car parks will help us. Council has let cash-in-loo and our developers in the category request this particular fee and I can support this way of cash-in-loo in this court.
In this chamber, in my early days here at council, I remember standing in front of you all requesting that you waive car parking fees for a proposed development and it was for a health hub at Belreid Key. And that application was going to be required to pay very, very significant sums of money, it was far more than this particular application. I was voted down, obviously, because there is a principle here and a policy here that has got to be applied and we can't ad hocly pick and choose which ones we eliminate from that policy. And the concept of cash-in-loo contributions is based on the philosophy that where commercial and residential developments have a shortfall of car parking, it is reasonable for the council to assist by accepting money for this shortfall to provide car parking bays in an adjacent or nearby existing or proposed public car park. We have proposals down the track that, we also have existing public car parking near this site, but we have, and Alderman James has alluded to it, the fact that we have proposals in our head that we need to push forward and one of those would encompass this particular area in Rosney Park. So unfortunately, we really, really support any developers that are trying to create housing in a suburb like that are trying to create housing in a suburb like Warrane. But it's a principle and we just have to apply it.
There is a secondary parking problem for me, page one one seven. Clause E six point seven point four A one talks about vehicles being able to drive into a property, reverse and drive out in a frontal position. Now, this is a standard residential condition. And in the past, it has come up with access for large trucks to very small turning areas. But also, I can remember an application for infill development on a corner on To Dewan Avenue, where it was refused due to a similar condition plus others. And the applicant bought an adjacent property so that they could have drive in one way and drive out the other, which was the way of covering it. Because at this point in time, reversing onto Bayfield Street is not really a good outcome for any kind of residential development in this area.
It's a joyless task when you have an application before you for a very high-calibre development of an infill nature. I suspect there's a reasonably strong demand for it. But we are in a position with the parking policy the way it is that we really do have to follow down the line of the recommendation. I do thank the applicant for his email today, and I can understand his perspectives. And the parking strategy is one that's changed over time as far as how different proposals are assessed. And it is indeed somewhat of an age of blunt and has an arbitrary element around it. But there has to be a degree of consistency around this. One of the things around parking that I find particularly unfair is situations where an applicant is a lessee of a building and the parking is required. The lessee may terminate the application. The business may not be viable. And I think of a case in Blythe Street where this happened. And it was a pre-kick to basically the building owner that those parking were still associated with it. It is an area that we should be looking at reinforcing and getting a higher-level approach across the state, particularly in inner-city areas. Certainly, parts of Melbourne have done this. And we will, you know, I will be voting as per the officer's recommendations. But I think we should take on board, looking at this as just one of the areas under planning we need to refine and need to get a bit smarter about how it's done.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I think under the current planning scheme, the approach that we take in regards to performance criteria and one in clause E six six one is a lot more flexible than the one we used to have where, you know, it was a fairly rigid application of, oh, there's a designated number of spaces. However, you know, council has some discretion around waiver of, you know, the car parking requirement of cash-in-lue. Whereas we now have an assessment under our planning scheme where there's a whole bunch of criteria that are gone through in excruciating detail, you know, about the, you know, the car parking demand, the availability on street and public car parking locality, et cetera. And the officers have gone through that fairly comprehensively. And I commend them on their report. I agree with the previous speakers that in this case, we do need to insist on the requirement in cash-in-lue.
That's a technical matter. We just need to accept this.
Item eleven point seven point ten, council formally adopts the council constitution for the bicycle driving.
I wish to move that. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Basically, it's to actually update it. We're trying across council to have some consistency as far as committee constitutions are concerned. But most of the changes relate to that aspect. There's no change to the roles of the committee. One thing that I feel is really pleasing is that we are actually including a school age representative. And hopefully, we will actually be able to get a person to fill that particular role. So I actually commend the constitution to the alderman.
Part of it is sad that we lose someone quick to the bicycle steering committee name. But I think, as Alderman Von Berto said, this brings it in line with a number of the other committee constitutions that we've been reviewing over the last year. And I commend to council.
I have a question through you and to Alderman Von Berto. And first of all, may I congratulate the committee on putting forward these changes? And they do bring them in line with other committees, special committees of council. Hypothetically speaking, Alderman Von Berto, on page one hundred and seventy-five, "If preference will be given to residents of the city", and that's okay, but nominees, I think it's a dot point, number two, "nominees must have a capacity to contribute from their own knowledge and experience in discussions in providing and implementing the council's strategy." So you have a number of nominees who have a capacity to be able to determine from their own knowledge and experience, and must have a commitment to assisting other organisations. In order, and priority four is to be given to people who are not already members of a special committee of council. My question through the mayor to Alderman Von Berto is, how do we actually get members on the committee? If, A, they obviously don't live within the city, B, don't have a knowledge of advice in implementing that special area, and three, have a commitment to assisting council and other organisation on the implementation? So they have to be experts in some ways. And priority is given to those not already members of special committee. Are we limiting it to certain individuals? And are they really precluded from, say, being ratepayers of Clarence, but not necessarily residents of Clarence? So what my question really is in a nutshell, are we really going to be able to get people on to the committee who have criteria, criterion one, criterion two, criterion three and criterion four? So are we able to get people on to the committee who don't necessarily have any of those criteria? I just would like an explanation because otherwise I think it's probably limiting to the capacity of those who can be members.
Mr. Mayor, bear in mind that it's actually a special committee of council, and this is Clarence City Council. Then it's reasonable that there is a preference for residents of the city, ratepayers, residents of the city, to actually be on that commission. As far as nominees must have a capacity to contribute from their own knowledge and experiences in discussions and providing advice on implementing council's bicycle strategy action plan, that doesn't necessarily mean that they're a bike rider. That's an aspect that would be considered when we get applications. And priority will be given to people who are not already members of the special committee of council. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Nelson, my understanding is that that is a, if you like, not a requirement, but it is something that we are actually looking at across all the committees of council so that we actually give as many residents, ratepayers, as possible, the opportunity to be on a commission. Is that the case? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just need to bring to the council's attention that we have circulated a revised page one hundred and ninety-four in the sense that it's been drawn to our attention that we may not reflect it accurately. Motion number four, that was passed as a meeting, given that motion number four was the one that was not paid for writing on the night. We found, we reported our view and what the motion called for. But we have sought for clarification of that and have admitted slightly effect of the motion is exactly the same. I just wanted to draw your attention that we have circulated a slightly reworded motion number four as reported from the other main.
Mr. Mayor, I would seek leave off the council to include in this recommendation that council writes the premier and the minister for parks asking for clarification in writing to council as to who provides landowner consent to a development application being lodged with council. I would seek to have that included as part of the recommendation that's listed in the agenda. And perhaps it could be... With a part D in it. And that is that council writes to the premier and minister for parks and wild... Parks, sorry, asking for clarification in writing to council as to who provides landowner consent to a development application being lodged with council. This is obviously part of the recommendation because it follows on that the notes and summary of submissions that were, it notes the summary of submissions, notes the preliminary comments provided in this report, and requests report for the detail in relation to those motions. And that council writes to the premier and minister for parks asking for clarification in writing to council as to who provides landowner consent to a development application being lodged with council.
I thought, Miss Hall, you had written to the manager of Parks and Wildlife requesting this already. Is that true?
Through this, you know, I haven't got the actual wording, you know, it's there in front of me, but I've certainly written on similar wording to the hilariously titled director of Parks and Wildlife or deputy director of Goodwell, I'm sure what his executive title is, Mr. Jason Jacoby, along the lines of what Alderman James are outlining there.
And he indicated that he represents the ministry in this?
Through, Mr. Mayor, we did have an earlier exchange of letters where Jacoby indicated that his delegates instructed this mail. But which, I've certain, that was eleven days ago, the council, the twenty-sixth of June, which has been circulated previously. I've written, I've got the date wrong, I think, but late June.
Twenty-nine, yeah.
Twenty-nine, sorry, I'm going to correct it. I have written back to him, I have outlined it, raising questions in relation to a number of matters. As again, I haven't received a written response.
Given that clarification, I would like to include some additional wording in this. I think we need to be, I believe we need to be a bit more prescriptive. And in C, I'd like to conclude at the next meeting of council and reports, request report by council at the next meeting of council including legal implications, resource implications, structural implications and community implications, but not limited to, and further actions that could be taken. The reason I raise this is there may be legal implications that I'm not aware of to please the council adopting any of all of these motions.
Look, I'll read some words table, so Alderman James and I have all set for my two discs. And I'd also read a word table from the additional suggestions to the motion so that we can record and then explain it again to everyone. The additional part D, I'll reread it. It says, "Council writes the premier and minister for parks asking for clarification in writing to council as to who provides landowner consent for a development application being lodged with council."
Absolutely.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, we actually need this in writing before us. Each of us need this in writing.
Request, item C, under Alderman James's proposal, would be request a report we provide at the next meeting of council including, but not limited to, legal implications, resources implications, structural implications and community implications, detailing any further actions that could be taken in respect of it to each motion or in respect of the development application in general. So if I'm reading that right, you've just included, but not... So, if I'm reading that right, you've just included, but not limited to, legal, resource, structural, and community in the motion as it said, right?
I'd second that. So, what we're debating now is, is the ultimate in motion is, and in with that C, which goes forward, and B. Can I perhaps suggest that wording be included in a different format? To the extent that I might suggest that, please, request the report to be provided at the next meeting of council, detailing any further actions, including, but not limited to, legal implications, resource implications, structural implications, and community implications that could be taken in respect of each motion or in respect of the government application in general, perhaps?
It seems that we've arrived at a agreement to delay something, so Alderman James applies this motion, and we're going to sit and get to speak.
Could we have that in writing, though? Because it's not that easy to remember when we're discussing things if it's not in writing. Point of order, Mr. Mayor, I actually think we need five minutes, and that this is actually typed out, and that we have it in writing. This is a complex change.
With the agreement, yes, I'm happy to send this item, and we have figures, there's a couple of things we can do, and we get that typed up in the session, please, of course. Okay.
If I could have a specific motion, that's item 17.7.3, including of the open city council, I think all of them cleared, they proceed, all those are clear. Gary, do you have a moment? So, item 17.4 is the appointment of an acting deputy mayor, clearly Alderman Campbell, if this is not clear, and the least there are points, an acting deputy mayor.
I'd like to nominate Alderman Chong.
Are there any other nominations? I nominate Alderman Beers, of course, for Alderman Chong, are you willing to accept that nomination?
Yes, thank you.
Alderman Beers, are you willing to accept that nomination? Are there any other nominations? I'll move, I'll start. We now have Alderman James, who nominated himself, are there any, are you willing to accept Alderman James? There have been no further nominations, through the members of the board. And we'll put it to the paper, and of course, they proceed after you.
Mr. Mayor, the ballot process is, if you have a, you get a ballot paper with...
Look, um, you might make sure that I'm watching it out there, otherwise we've defeated the level of kicking in the mouth.
No, they're excluded from the chamber, I can't vote, that's all. I can't do without control. You've got a ballot paper with, all twelve councillors listed, but there are three nominations, being Alderman James, Alderman Chong, and Alderman Beers, just marked, he preferred candidate of the three, in the event that no one receives an absolute majority, the lowest scoring nominee will be excluded, and it'll be opened in a red envelope.
And when you mark it, do you mark it with a tick?
You can mark it with a tick across a one, whatever you like, as long as it's clear as to which candidate it is.
Thank you very much.
And moving on to item 12, the question is, are there any others?
Mayor, through you to Mr. Hall, do we have an update in relation to insurance claims after the flood of the 10th and 11th of May? Or detailed in the audit committee report, but I'm wondering if we have any?
Do we have an update on the Lord Waterdale open launching facility? I sound like a broken record here.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, it's Jude Hallowell, the received advice from the consultants, who submitted to ground...
Through you, I'd like to ask Mr. Lovell what the current status is of the appeals against the decisions, development application decisions for 21 Harmony Lane, South Arm, which is the South Arm Skate Park, and also 27 King Street, Bell Reef.
I noticed in the Bicycle Advisory Committee notes that there was a comment about a question on the surface that's being put on the Richmond Road for cyclists, the quality of the surface. As somebody who drives along there regularly and gets frustrated by the roadworks, I was wondering if there was any update on what was happening, and also when we thought it might be finished.
Oh, no, I understand, I understand that. I understand that, yeah, 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 no, yeah.
One, could we be informed just to when the next stage of the Bell Reef Park foreshore redevelopment will occur? Through you, Mr. Graham. And secondly, the Audit Committee commissioned an external consultant to do a report and to review of the council's policy on community consultation, and I am aware that that's going to the Audit Committee, but I'm hopeful that this would actually come back to council as part of a workshop.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the document, well, the consultancy of the project, first to the part of the Audit Committee projects, my understanding, or my expectation is that it'll go to the next Audit Committee meeting, I suppose, we would, in normal circumstances, conduct the workshop to council and respect that, mate.
And just an addendum, is it possible for us to consider having that consultant do that workshop?
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Two questions, and both of them to Mr. Graham. Clifton Beach diving platform, or has that been removed by council, or does council know anything about removing a structure that, no?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, no, that's news, I'm not a consultant, I don't know if it's removed, or if it's not.
We provided a grant for a South Arm similar platform at South Arm, but I was contacted by someone who said that at Clifton Beach they've removed some diving platform that existed, and the children and the teenagers are not very happy. So, perhaps you don't know of that as existence at all.
Mr. Mayor, what a strong shooter, I don't know if he knows any better than that.
The other one, it relates to footpaths in Monty Good Bay, have been approached by people who have been finding it difficult to wheel prams, et cetera, on some of the streets due to obstruction. Is it possible to do an inspection of the footpaths in Monty Good Bay and make sure that they are free from obstruction?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, is something you can do that?
I'm hoping that you might now, as the general manager, be able to give you some enlightenment around the Victoria Espinard question I asked last council meeting. It was around scheduled or impending road restoration, upgrade, or changes to the...
Thank you.
Thank you. Could be almost existential, the next question, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the general manager. It's in relation to the road rules, which we are rule takers, not rule makers, but it's in relation to Rule 197.1b, which relates to situations where parking on a nature strip is permitted. We're having developments occurring in Clarence in some areas where you'll find that one side of the street is residential, the other might be a lower density residential, and when there isn't scope, if you like, on the higher density residential side to park outside of premises, and there's an abundance of reservation on the other side of the street, my understanding is that it's not permissible under the road rules for the reservation to be used by anyone other than the owner of adjacent properties.
Through you, Mayor, the road rules change by, for those people who live in, up near the, up in Manchester, and like, completely changed, and...
What is the, I guess the question is, is there an ability to perhaps look at the potential pressures this is putting in areas where there's potentially an abundance of car parks directly available opposite properties that currently don't have the ability to use their own nature strips because of an absence there of?
Firstly, my question through you to Mr. Graham, well, two questions. Firstly, the poor Bambur Street and the actual June understory that they actually occurred, we have provided sand, nourishment in that corner, how is that standing up to the natural surface and tidal movements? And is it intended, should there be, obviously, seem, basically dissociating that sand from that corner, is there a program to reinstate that in the event of a high tide or any further erosion from the city?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I understand...
Mr. Graham, what's the current state of play in relation to the Clarence Lifestyle Village contributing to the roadworks on the corner of Pipers and East Dorn Highway?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I recently, I need him to come with Department of Parks and Parks Office and Development Department of...
Wasn't there some condition within the development that, once the capacity of the development met its potential, that there would be a requirement for them to undertake works?
I'm now that there's a certain condition for them to undertake work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Part A, obviously, is a notes, the summary of submissions and motions arising from the meeting on the 17th of July. B notes the preliminary comments provided in this report as per the motion. And C, as is outlined by Alderman Cusick, requests a further report be provided at the next meeting detailing any further actions, including but not limited to those four areas, which of course covered, should be covered, I believe, that could be taken in respect of each motion that was carried at the meeting on the 17th of July. And because there is some uncertainty in relation to, as to whether the, or asking for clarification as to who provides landowner...
for clarification as to who provides landowner's consent to the development application being lodged with council, this is a grey area, and notwithstanding that the General Manager has written to the delegate, the minister, it's important, I think, that we need to have from the minister as to whether or not it's he or his delegate who provides landowner consent to a development application being lodged with council. I seek council's support.
Well, I am very self-explanatory, I'll address C, and the reasons that I've asked the specific, that the specific legal resource structural implications being included is that with the motions, say Motion 1, that's council repokes this preferred development agreement with under developments, I don't know what legal implications may, that may incur, and I would like to know, and I believe probably the movers and the supporters of this motion would like to know. And Motion 2, of course, links to Motion 1, and in relation to Motion 3, that the council constitute a community consultation unit, it'd be resource implications there, and I'm also not sure whether the supporters of the motion, I mean, it says a unit within council structure, but it also said to return confidence and transparency to relation between council and committee, do the movers, the supporters of the motion mean that this would include or envisage community representatives on this, within this unit? And if so, we'd need to have some idea how these representatives might be selected. So I just thought that we needed to have some more prescriptive criteria in that motion's measure.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Here, I've read the legal advice we have on this, and I must say, I'm not a lawyer, and it's a thing that you have to read many times, but Alderman Cusick has raised some good points, and I've notes the community consultation one, and it is very vague, because you're quite right, Alderman Cusick will take resources of this council, I'm not quite sure how it's to be structured, I'm not, I'm not even sure, there doesn't seem to be any amount on it, so does that mean every decision council makes it goes to community consultation? Because it doesn't tell us, it doesn't say if it's for large projects or what kind of projects we are to have consultation on. Further to Point D, in all my time on council, and Point D, as we know, the council writes to the Premier Minister Parks, I've never known in my time on council for something to go on and on and on and on. Is the minister going to grant consent or not? Now, he is the premier, sure as God, he could stop mucking people around and give us a direct answer. I mean, why have we got staff working on this when we may go through the process and, you know, it may not be, they may not offer consent? Now, maybe that's a bit unfair, and someone can tell me if it is, but I can't understand that why, I think it's a simple thing, why does the General Manager have to write, and we're asking to write again?
I'd imagine it's quite important that given the council rights, the Premier, yes, yes, yeah, yeah, true, true, true. But then again, as I said, you know, it's just going on and on and on. Now, the questions here that when we get the report back, I think are very good, I think the additions here are very good, I'm going to go to Alderman Cusick on those, but I've never known anything in my time to just drag on.
I'd I say that I spent most of today preparing a response to Alderman Bomberto's motion, which was withdrawn here tonight and left me with a wasted day investigating the content of that motion. It wasn't wasted, no, I take that back, it wasn't wasted because I became quite informed. And I agree with you, this is going on and on and on, but I would really like to see the response that we got from Parks and Wildlife acted upon, because the reality is that until we know what we're dealing with, as far as a proposed development's concerned, until we actually look at it from a DA, what have we got to tell them? A proposal that we think may come before it? We have to actually deal with it in order to show the Crown that we have actually something specific that we're dealing with. Can I ask the question? The council is the VC? The council is the VC? Yes, they're a managing authority, but as a managing authority, they have become the VC. Is that correct?
We're a VC.
Yes, exactly. Now, if council is the VC and it was considering a hypothetical DA development, in order to progress that development, and it's hypothetical at this stage, that developer would become the sub-VC? Correct, correct. So the minister grants to the VC, and the VC accepts the lease of the land to use the land for the permitted purpose for the term, on the terms of this lease and subject to the Act. The permitted purpose, I don't know if I need to spell it out, but it has restrictions. But notwithstanding Clause 3.1 or anything else in this lease, the minister acknowledges that the VC may enter into a sub-lease or subleases for the purpose of developing, including commercial development of part or all of the land. It's being acknowledged that the permitted purpose of any sub-lease, and I love what the permitted purpose is, must be on terms satisfactory to the minister. It's being acknowledged that the minister will not have input into any commercial terms of any sub-lease entered in by the VC. So any sub-lease entered into by the VC to allow for the development of the land must ensure that any development of the land is in a matter that is consistent with the permitted purpose and must have regard to the Rodney Hill Nature Recreation Area Managed Strategy. End of story. I think we've actually got a DA that may be coming before us, and until that DA is dealt with, the minister has nothing to actually deal with because he doesn't know what the content or the change of these sub-lease might look like. That's my idea. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to either the General Manager or to Mr. Nelson, hard be the council rights to the Premier and Minister for Parks, they are one and the same, asking for clarification in writing as to who provides landowner consent to a development application being lodged with council. My question to either the General Manager or Mr. Nelson is, if council writes, then what ramifications does that have in relation to that any matter relating to consent actually is for the General Manager to determine? Can we have some advice on that? Because this is very specific, that it is council writing to the Premier. This addition to this particular recommendation is quite similar to the motion on notice that I had. It's a wee bit different, but it's quite similar. And Alderman James actually had quite a few concerns in relation to that motion at the briefing on Friday, so I'm very interested to note that now there is a, an extra component to the recommendation in his motion, and I'd like to know the nuances in terms of council writing to the Premier as compared to with my motion on notice, it was that the General Manager writes to the minister. Could that be explained to us, please, bearing in mind the advice that we have?
We'll take some formal advice on that, but I'll let Alderman James describe it by to address that particular point.
I'd just like to make it clear that I have concerns about council writing when this matter is related to the consent aspect, and let me get it really clear for you, consent actually, within the Act, under Section 52.1v, has two components to it. It is giving written permission and it is signing the DA. So there are two aspects, and depending on the advice that is provided, it can be that both the state and the General Manager give that consent, or one of them gives that consent. So it's a really complicated area, and we have to be very careful that council is not the one that's making the determination, but that it is the General Manager. So I think this is quite, it looks simple, but it is complicated.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, I want to comment on the previous motion, but in relation to this, I don't have a problem with it in the sense that it's not asking the Premier to make a determination, or it's only merely asking for clarification or advice. It could very well be answered in the context that he writes back saying, it's not me, it's my delegate as the Director of Parks and Wildlife, it's not actually, whereas it's not, it's not the same, quite the same as council writing to him, asking that consent not be given, because that's a determinative action.
Thank you. Right, I'll reply Alderman James.
Mr. Mayor, I think we've discussed this, and I think the General Manager's comments are quite appropriate in this instance, and I would seek council support for A, B, C, and D.
So the motion is A, B, C, or M, D?
Oh, M, D.
I think I have it out of my pocket.
M, D.
All those are valid. Against the motion, is there any? So that brings us to the end of our session, council, to the captain of the House of Commons in close session, so I'd like to thank members of the Parliament for having the last minute's time here.